See people on.
All right, for everyone online joining us by way of Zoom, welcome to the hearing for the Open Space Act Regulations. We will get formally underway in a minute or two, giving folks another minute or so to gather. Welcome everyone to the public hearing for the Open Space Act Regulations that have been performed by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Let me begin with something important. We regret that for technical reasons only Spanish language translation is available for today's session. As indicated on the slide that Megan is sharing, we are going to be providing a second public hearing for the Open Space Act Regulations to provide the promised translation services in the other four languages. We really want to abide by our environmental justice policy and provide proper translation services for this session. So there will be a second public session for the Open Space Act Regulations. It will be remote only and held on January the 16th at 1:00 PM. It will include all intended translation services and proper notice of that will be put forward on our website and otherwise made available as soon as possible. So for those who otherwise would like to testify on the 16th, that will be available as well. So for those attending remotely and desiring Spanish language translation services only, please select the Spanish language tab on your Zoom and translation services will be available in Spanish today and the other four intended languages on the 16th of January. Okay, welcome. This is the public hearing on draft Open Space Act Regulations proposed by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. My name is Kirk Gertner. I am the Assistant Secretary for Environmental Policy for Energy and Environmental Affairs and will serve as the presiding officer for this hearing. We are recording this hearing for the purpose of accuracy. We do not expect to post the recording. I do declare this hybrid public meeting to be open at 1:04 PM on December 17th, 2024. We're here to receive public comments on the draft Open Space Act Regulations proposed by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs at 301 CMR 52. You may present comment this afternoon. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand or for those on Zoom, indicate that in the chat feature at the bottom of the screen. Please be sure your name is shown accurately so we know who to call upon. We will stagger comments from those in the room and on Zoom. We will call upon commenters in the order that we received the requests. When called upon, those on Zoom will be able to unmute. Before making a comment, please state your name and affiliation if any. Please limit your comments to five minutes and address your comments to the draft regulations. You may also send in written comments by email to eea@michael.gendron2@mass.gov. Please include your name and contact information and refer to 301 CMR 52 in the subject line. You might also submit comments by mail addressed to Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Attention, Michael Gendron, 100 Cambridge Street, Suite 900, Boston, Mass. 02114. All written comments, including those submitted electronically and by mail, must be received by Energy and Environmental Affairs by 5:00 PM on January 22nd, 2025. A copy of the notice of this hearing with the instructions for submitting written comments is available on EEA's website at https://www.mass.gov/events/December172024. Notice of public hearing opportunity to submit comments, 12/17/2024. We will place this website and email address for written comments in the chat. The following are present today to receive comments on behalf of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Mike Gendron, Open Space Act Coordinator. Ivy Powers, Deputy Legislative Director. Johannes Buchanan, Assistant Secretary for Legislative Affairs, present on Zoom. And Bob Wilber, Director of the Division of Conservation Services. The agenda for today's meeting is as follows. First, Mike Gendron will give a brief overview of the draft regulations. After that, we'll open the floor for comment. Mike.
Thank you all for attending today. The legislature enacted an act preserving open space in the Commonwealth in 2022. The act codified some elements of existing EEA policy and created new requirements for public entities seeking legislative authorization for disposition or change in use of land subject to Article 97. Among these requirements were notification to the public and to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs and an alternatives analysis and provision of replacement land to avoid a net loss of Article 97 lands. Additionally, the act included provisions related to waiver of the requirement to provide replacement land and a provision of funding in lieu of replacement lands. The act required EEA to issue regulations to implement these provisions and today we will be accepting comments on these regulations.
Thank you, Mike. I'll now open the hearing to public comment. If you wish to speak and are present in the room, please raise your hand and indicate in the chat feature at the bottom of the screen if you're interested in offering comment if you are joining us by way of Zoom. For those in the Zoom again, please be sure your name as shown is accurate so we know who to call upon. We will call upon commenters in the order where you receive their requests staggering but moving between those on Zoom and present here at Fish and Wildlife in Westboro. For those on Zoom, when called upon, you'll be able to unmute before making a comment. Please state your name and affiliation if any. Please limit your comments to five minutes and address your comments to the draft regulations. Megan, can you call upon our first party in the Zoom?
Yes, Brian Campbell, you should be allowed to unmute.
Yes, Brian Campbell, I'm a retired electrical engineer and I've lived in Massachusetts basically my whole life except for when I was in the Navy. I disagree with this constitution change. We should not be paving over Massachusetts with a bunch of slave imported manufactured solar panels from China. And that is where 80% of the production worldwide of solar panels is coming from either the parts or the panels themselves. And I just feel like this is wrong. And to not compensate for the open space, cutting down our forests, putting up this this solar panels which are only going to be lasting at 25 to 30 years and its intermittent energy that destroys our grid. And the same thing really can be said about offshore wind too. Alls we're doing is just forcing our electrical generation into our gas, which is used for our heat. But of course you guys have heat pumps which are supposedly going to save us, which also require electrical energy. AI requires electrical energy. If anything, this state should seriously look again at nuclear power. Although I don't believe this state cares a thing about climate change. And the reason why I say that is because you closed our number one generator, Pilgrim Nuclear in Plymouth, which was the number one non-carbon emitting energy source in Massachusetts. And it just shows that this state is just not serious about reducing emissions. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. May now turn to Senator Jamie Eldredge here in the room. And one thing I neglected to mention to folks in the room, we would appreciate it if you would come to the front chair here so you can be better seen by way of Zoom and those who are in on Zoom. Thank you, Senator Eldredge.
Great, well, good afternoon and I want to thank you, Assistant Secretary Gardner, all the staff with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, including Mike Gendron, for not only holding this hearing but also extending the public comment period for 30 days. As probably most people here in the room are familiar is I was very proud to sponsor this legislation for not just years but decades with Rep. Ruth Balzer. So I appreciate the administration's work on implementing the regulations. And specifically to the Public Land Preservation Act, my comments in terms of the regulations include the following. Under Section 1, appreciate the notation, of course, that under Article 97 requires a vote of two-thirds of the legislature. Would like to also include in that regulation the intent of the protection and preservation of Article 97, in other words, the purpose behind the legislation. So that's what I want to note on Section 1. In regards to Section 4, under the requirements, there should be clarification on the timing and details of public notice requirements that need to be taken prior to Article 97 action. In regard to Section 5, notification, I want to make sure that there are every possible effort to take in with respect to notification, including for a butters to be notified. In regards to Section 6, the alternative analysis section would respectfully ask for clarification on the standards for an affirmative vote. Is this a majority vote? Is the two-thirds vote? What is what is the requirement for the affirmative vote? For Section 7, replacement land in monetary value, which I think is part of the law and I would argue the regulation that's, you know, going to be a challenge is require that all appraisals should meet state standards for appraisal of the of the value of the land. Regarding Section 8, determination of national resource value, which under the law grants this determination to the EOEA secretary is would respectfully ask to include an appeal provision, given there may be some disagreements on on those actions. With respect to Section 9, funding in lieu, a need for standards regarding notices and comments, specifying when the notice to EA is required, as well as any consequences for non-compliance. And I know that's often can be a difficult issue as far as enforcement. I will say that I think the model of the MBTA Communities Act is a good one in the sense that if a community, you know, doesn't follow the law, that the risk of loss of state grants be considered. So it asks respectfully for Executive Office Environmental Energy Affairs to consider whether if there's non-compliance with the regulations under Article 97 and PLPA that that therefore that perhaps that community would not be eligible for any environmental related or open space related state grant. So those are my comments. Thank you so much and as the state senator of this area, thank you for having this hearing out in this area. One of my favorite state buildings in the Commonwealth. So thanks so much for having me and appreciate you having this.
Appreciate the thoughtful comments, Senator. Megan, can we turn to another commenter online?
Yes, next commenter is Rob Johnson. You should have the ability to unmute.
Hi, thank you. And thanks EEA for getting these regulations posted. We appreciate the work you've done over the years enforcing your land disposition policy. And now, you know, have the opportunity to regulations to make this even more concrete for everyone involved. I'm Executive Director of the Massachusetts Land Trust Coalition, representing the 140 land trusts that work across Massachusetts. Land trusts, as as many of you know, put in months and sometimes years of work to conserve parcels of conservation and parkland that often end up under the care of municipal state or other public entities and thus subject to Article 97. That's why we work so hard with Rep. Ruth Balzer and Senator Jamie Eldredge and many other coalition partners to pass an act preserving open space in the Commonwealth. Communities are going to continue to face the need to build essential facilities and without a doubt, it's easier and cheaper for them to look to existing conserved open space for those facilities rather than looking to acquire and redevelop a site that's already disturbed. But as Article 97 says so well, our parks and conservation land were required for the many irreplaceable benefits that they provide to communities and the Commonwealth. And that's why they should not be disposed of lively. That's why it's really essential for EEA to get these regs right, to adopt regs that are strong and clear to enforce this important law. Today I offer preliminary comments because we're going to take advantage of your extended comment period to submit written testimony in January. But I do want to offer some preliminary thoughts here. First, I would echo what Senator Eldredge said that we would like to see Section 1 of the regs include a statement of the purposes and really the objectives of this law, which is to protect, preserve and enhance open space areas covered by Article 97, by establishing a high bar for any proponent proposing to convert such areas to other uses and to ensure no net loss of valuable open space when such conversions are indeed unavoidable. In Section 4, this is one of several places in the regulations where where there should be some timeframes specified. Instead of in Section 4 saying prior to taking an Article 97 action, there should be a minimum time period stated for the proponent to comply with all the public notice requirements, the provision of all the necessary materials for EA's review, et cetera. You need time for the reviews that you undertake under this law and proponents should be required to submit it to you in a manner that allows you to do your job for all of us. Moving on, a key interest of advocates working to pass this law was really to increase transparency and there are several places in the regs where public notice requirements are stated. But the standards for posting are woefully inadequate. There's a couple of places where you say that, you know, news of this effort to dispose of conservation land or divert it to other uses will be simply posted on the public entity's website. It, you know, I question whether anybody will who should see it will see it if it's simply buried somewhere on a website. So I think at a minimum, I like Senator Eldredge's idea of a butters notice. But at a minimum, I would also encourage you to require posting in the environmental monitor and notice to community-based organizations and tribal organizations in accordance with the MEPA Public Involvement Protocol, even if the specific Article 97 action isn't otherwise subject to MEPA. The environment monitor is is a much recognized place for for the citizens and advocates to recognize when important actions are being taken. So that's where you should post it. Regarding appraisals, appraisals should be included in the information that proponents are required to post in a public notice, in addition to all the other items you list in the public notice requirements. And there should be a minimum public notice period specified. Regarding appraisals, I agree with Senator Eldredge that all appraisals should be submitted in support that are supported submitted in support of an action should meet either EA, DCAM or Yellow Book appraisal standards. Your draft regs say that such appraisals meeting those standards will be presumptively valid. But let's save you and us, the public, the headache of evaluating insufficient proposals, substandard appraisals by simply requiring that in all instances they be done to either the EA, DCAM or Yellow Book standard. In terms of alternatives analysis, where proponents are required to identify each alternative considered and speak to why it may be deemed infeasible. I have a problem with this sentence that says cost differences between land owned by the public entity and equivalent private land shall not be the sole basis for infeasibility. In fact, I'd like to see that word soul changed to primary. Should not be considered the primary reason for infeasibility. We need to get beyond the point where public entities look to existing protected lands as a piggy bank for their future land needs. Yes, alternatives are out there and yes, those alternatives may be costly. But the cost required is in recognition of the many values in Article 97. In the alternatives analysis, Section 6 and elsewhere, there's standards for the required vote. And Senator Eldredge spoke to this as well. I would, I would like to see the standards for the public vote be delineated to be at least equal to the two-thirds legislative, the two-thirds standard, which is itself, it's is a standard in Article 97 itself. So rather than the implied simple majority, I would advocate for a two-thirds majority. In addition, if land is under the care and control of a subsidiary entity such as a municipal conservation commissioner, parks commission, that entity should also be required to obtain at least a two-thirds vote in addition to the vote of the final legislative authority, that city council or select board, for example. In the funding and lose section, I think same issue with the need for specified public notice standards and length of public notice and comment periods. I'm wrapping up here. I think in your funding and loop process that's outlined in Section 9, there's a missing step here. There's, there's a statement in 96C3 that EA will, there will be a determination by EA on the natural resources values of the non-contemporaneously protected replacement parcel. But in order for there to be such a determination, you need to state how and when the proponent needs to tell you which non-contemporaneously protected parcel they intend to protect so that you can in fact issue a natural resource value determination before they acquire it. And that step is not explained in the right and, you know, I think kind of wrapping up, I want to just encourage the consequences for non-compliance. I would support Senator Eldredge's idea of at a minimum, ineligible ability for state assistance programs would be a consequence for non-compliance with the regulations and the law. And my last thought is just, you know, I, your website states an intention to reissue updated land disposition policy. And I'm just kind of wondering what the intersection between that policy is rewritten will be with these regulations. Just want to make sure that whatever is written is consistent and provides clear guidance rather than two confusing sources of guidance for those considering these actions. Thanks for your attention and I again will follow up in writing.
All right, thank you, Rob and the members of the MLTC for that testimony. Let me ask whether there's another party in the room. Yes, please, Dennis.
My name is Suzanne Conley. I'm from Barnstable, Massachusetts. Thank you for having me here. I worked 20 years for the state, so I hope you all look upon me kindly as a state retiree. But I'm here and I don't want to be the skunk at the picnic, but I'm here on behalf of a lot of the residents of Barnstable who are fighting to preserve recreational beaches protected under Article 97 from action, Article 97 actions initiated by an offshore wind developer. We lost one beach which was taken with very little public input, no, no public input to speak of. We're fighting a second Article 97 action because of easements that were granted to a developer, the same developer under what we believe to be questionable municipal process. And a third beautiful recreational area we call, we call Greater Doses Beach that the same developer wants to, is planning to take under Article 97. My comments on the proposed policies are a few, but I hope you take them seriously. The alternatives analysis being conducted by a developer seeking alternate ways to say, for example, to land massive extra high voltage offshore wind farm cables. In my experience, and I've read every single example of their alternative analysis have been cursory and self-serving. These are not directed by the state, they're directed by profit-seeking developers. I would like you all to keep that in mind as you consider actions requested under Article 97. Secondly, monetary exchange in lieu of replacement land is too easily agreed upon when in the case, when the case involves, for example, extensive saltwater frontage. How do you put a price tag on that fairly? Because in our case in Barnstable certainly wasn't done. I would urge you all, as you rewrite these regulations, to include options such as no. This is protected land. This is recreational land that means an awful lot to people. These are fisheries where people depend on for their livelihood, whether it's recreational fishing or commercial fishing. And then to go to the act that seems to have two names, which I'm perennially confused about, an act preserving open space and people say to me all the time, it's also called the Public Lands Protection Act. I'm not sure about, you know, what is accurate. I would love to know that if you can answer that for me. When I read the Public Lands Protection Act that one can find online, Section 2 reads, "The Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs shall promulgate regulations to implement subsections A and B of Section 5A of the general laws within 18 months after effective date of this act." And I may be wrong, but I'm guessing that's what we're trying to do here. Okay, the act was approved on November 17th, 2022. So we are well outside of the 18 months that are coded into law. And I'd really like an answer as to how we can deal with that anomaly. The 21 days, a previous speaker may have referred to this, public notice that the the requester for Article 97 action has, they have to provide public comment period of at least 21 days if they're looking for monetary substitution in lieu of land. 21 days is certainly not enough time for the general public to absorb, consider, think about and organize to respond adequately. So I would say, please, please, as you write these things, please consider having much more time and consideration given to public input. As far as I'm concerned, in the entire Massachusetts Constitution, which I've grown up in this state, I worked for this state faithfully for a long, long time. The most beautiful language in our constitution can be found in Article 97. "The people shall have the right to clean air and water, freedom from excessive and unnecessary noise, the natural scenic, historic and aesthetic qualities of their environment and the protection of the people in their right to the conservation, development and utilization of the agricultural, mineral, forest, water, air and other natural resources is hereby declared to be a public purpose. Where public purpose conflicts with public interest, I believe we refer to the constitution of the Commonwealth." Where public purpose conflicts with public interest, I believe we refer to the Constitution of the Commonwealth. Thank you so much for hearing me out. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. Megan, can we turn to another party online?
Yes, Kathy Spera, you should be able to unmute.
Good afternoon, and thank you. I'm Kathy Spera. I'm Conservation Director from Stowe, and I've been a strong supporter of the Public Land or Open Space Protection Act. Going back to the days that Pam Rieser was our state senator and remain so today. And thank you, Senator Eldridge. I am also on the Board of Directors of the Massachusetts Society of Municipal Conservation Professionals. And wearing both hats, I want to thank you for your work on these regulations and for the increased transparency that these regulations will foster. In Stowe, we have a strong and proud history of protecting land. And the Conservation Commission protects and stewards more than sixteen hundred acres of land in fee and more than eight hundred acres of conservation restrictions. I've been involved as a member or employee of the commission for more than twenty years. And during that time, we have fended off several efforts to divert conservation land for a new school and playing fields for airport landing lights and for water supply wells. We felt these efforts were ill conceived and that alternatives were available that had not been explored. The Article ninety seven policy at the time, particularly the requirement that the Conservation Commission's vote be unanimous were critical to our success in defending our public resources. More recently, we have shepherded two Article ninety seven dispositions through the process. Assisting with the evaluation of alternatives, identifying and protecting replacement lands for both that had equal or greater natural resource values. And collaborating with the proponents and EA through every step of the process. I expect that we will submit more detailed public comments on the regulations. But I wanted to identify five issues today for your attention as you work to revise and finalize the regs. First, the interaction between the regulations and the policy is unclear. And we don't have the benefit of being able to review revisions to the policy. However, we think it's important that three things be incorporated into the regulations themselves. Since they have greater force of law than a policy document. These are an affirmative statement of the known at law school. The requirement for the public entity to declare the land surplus. And the quantum of vote that must be taken by the public entity where this is required. As I've already indicated, the current requirement in the policy that the vote be unanimous has been critical for us in the past in safeguarding our conservation holdings. Second, I understand that it is the intent of the regulations that the public entity with land taken for another purpose be involved in the process. But this should be made much more explicit in the regulations and in any flow charts explaining the process. We are the ones that know the land, that will have to manage any replacement land. And that can identify alternatives that may not have been considered. And provide information on the comparative natural resource values of various properties. As written, the regulations are very explicit about the need for proponents to consult with EA. But less so about the involvement of the public entity in the process. Adequate time and opportunity for comment by the public entity and the public should be provided for all dispositions. Third, the provision of in lieu funds as an alternative to replacement land should be the exception. With every effort made to find replacement land during the disposition process. The regulations should be more explicit about what efforts are needed to find replacement land. And importantly, the land to be purchased with in lieu funds should be reviewed by the secretary prior to the expenditure of the funds to ensure that these lands meet the letter and spirit of the regulations. Also, with regard to in lieu funds, the regulations currently provide several options for the deposit of the in lieu funds, one of which is in the local community preservation fund if one exists. The expenditure of CPA funds requires the positive vote of the Community Preservation Committee and then a vote of the community's legislative body. These are two requirements that could sidetrack the expenditure of the in lieu funds. So I feel that it is important that the in lieu funds be placed in a dedicated municipal fund where they are able to be expended by the public entity that lost the land without further appropriation. And then finally, additional attention needs to be given to enforcement. I understand that there is no explicit enforcement provision in the law. But I think EA should work with the AG's office in the legislature to explore options. I note that there was virtually no enforcement mechanism in the MBTA Communities Act. However, the Commonwealth has not been shy about filing suit to seek compliance. And as we've seen, the loss of grant funds may be insufficient inducement to ensure compliance. Thank you again for this opportunity to comment on the regulations. And thank you for the extension of the deadline to give us time to weigh in in a meaningful way.
Thank you for your testimony. Let me again turn to someone in the room who'd like to offer testimony. Yes, please.
Yeah, my name is Olden Lathrup. I'm on the Rotten Conservation Commission. I've been the point guy for several land acquisitions that we've done. And I've also been on the commission during one Article ninety seven land swap. So I don't come at this from knowing how all the legislative process works, but I come at it from somebody in in the trenches who's got to implement this stuff. I will keep my comments down to just three of these sections. Two minor ones we'll get through quickly and then I'll have a longer one. So section ten, waiver of modification, one B. You're allowing twenty-five hundred square feet just to be transferred with seemingly not a lot of checks and balances. If that is kept, I would like to see that made cumulative. So you can't transfer twenty-five hundred square feet one year and then three years later do another one and three years later do another one and have this incremental creep of losing land. There should be something that says, okay, we can do this. We really need to, but we're not going to keep doing it and whittle it away. And also on section ten, what's the numbers here? Number three. Determination by the secretary. Maybe this is my, my not really being very in tune with how the legislative process works, but it seems like I would like to see a sort of a safety valve there that if we have one governor who happens to be very anti-environmental, Secretary VEA basically reports to the governor. Like to have their, the legislator have the ability to come in and override that decision if they feel it's really egregious. So those are, but I don't really know how this process works. So my main comment is on section nine. Let me get that out here. So section nine is about being able to say, eh, I can't find anything. Here's a pile of money and walk away. That is a very dangerous loophole, in my opinion. People are always trying to look at, as a previous speaker said, conservation land should not be a piggy bank. And part of my objection here is that what, what a developer or somebody would give in return is only a hundred and ten percent of the fair value of the land that's taken. That is grossly inadequate. Let me explain. So let me give a there's far more cost to acquiring conservation land than simply the purchase price. It ignores having to do a survey, having to do an appraisal. The section nine dot six reporting requirements, somebody's got to do that work. Filing and lawyer fees, staff time, this stuff takes time, volunteer time, it takes time. And the fact that finding suitable land is difficult. So let me give a few examples. I've been involved in some of these land purchases. These are just a few highlights of something we did in the last few years. One was a hundred and nineteen acres. The purchase price was five eighty-eight thousand dollars. The appraisal cost forty-five hundred dollars. Lawyers fees, about a thousand. Other fees, three fifty-five. A survey, because one of the, maybe that's not required, but we think it's very smart for us to get a proper survey done of any land we own with nice bounds put in because as everybody who's on the Conservation Commission knows, encroachment happens. And we need to know where our land is and the neighbors need to know where our land is and their land is. So we usually spring for a survey. That costs sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Now, in this particular case, since the land was fairly expensive, that ended up to about twenty-two thousand four hundred above the purchase price, which in this case was only three point eight percent. Another one, twenty-eight acres. This one had a complicated title. Four hundred thousand dollar purchase price. The appraisal took about twenty-eight hundred dollars. Lawyers in this case was five point two K because of the complicated. This is one of those deeds that said go right until you get to Ebenezer, this old chicken coop and then take a left for the, for the tree and the, and you know, the big oak tree, that sort of thing. We had, we sent it out to bid for three surveys and one of them would refuse to bid because it was just too messy. So the lowest bid we got for a survey was eighty-seven hundred dollars. So the total beyond the purchase on that one was about seventeen thousand dollars or four point two percent of the purchase price. Now, one more, these are large ones. Here's one we bought. There was only fifteen acres, cost us thirty thousand dollars. The appraisal was twenty-five hundred. Lawyers entitled on this one was, was a little over four thousand, fees about seventeen hundred and survey about eleven thousand. So in beyond the purchase price, we spent about nineteen-three which was sixty-four percent of the purchase price. So if somebody had given us ten percent more, that would have been completely inadequate. And what it's not counting is the staff time. So we, we didn't, we don't really have an accounting system for how many hours our administrator spends on various things and our volunteers, I know, don't, don't do that either. But there's additional cost here that, that I don't have, you know, that I can't find receipts for. So my points are, one, land acquisition cost is much more than just the purchase price. Two, many additional costs are not proportional to the purchase prices. So things like lawyer fees and title searches cost pretty much the same regardless of how much the land is. So having somebody give more as a percentage really doesn't work. Three, ten percent over three years, if, if it is, comes out to about three point two percent annual, which is often less than the amount real estate appreciates. So if somebody were to give you a hundred and ten percent now and you buy the the land three years later, you're probably losing on that proposition just from purchase price alone. Four, if a proponent can't find land, CONCOM is going to have, or whoever buys it is going to have a pretty, has going to run into the same problem. You know, if nobody wants to sell land, there isn't any available. Well, hunting the issue to the CONCOM isn't going to somehow magically make land appear. Five, there's no way to really know the cost of acquiring land, negotiating a deal or finding land in the first place until you've actually done it. So we need to err on the side of it's going to cost more than you think. Six, there's no mechanism for not using the payment in three years. Other folks have already mentioned that. You know, what do you do with non-compliance? And I don't really want to punish the entities. I almost want to help them because if they're not having complied because they couldn't find land. Well, anyway, I'll let people who know the legislative process think about that a lot more. So my suggestions are, my preference would be one, scrap in lieu of funding altogether. I realize you can't do that because it's in the law. So I would suggest number two, instead, a gross overhaul. Where instead of a hundred percent of, ten percent of the purchase price, you have to put in escrow. Double the value or a hundred K more, whichever is greater. And if whatever doesn't get used can go back out of that escrow. So that escrow account is only good for buying that land. But it's a substantial hurdle. You're not just going to take this and push it off and make it somebody else's problem later. That's my comments.
Megan, someone from Zoom.
Jennifer Carlino, you're next. You should be able to unmute.
Hello, thank you. I'm Jennifer Carlino, environmental planner for the town of Easton and a member of the Boards of Directors of the Massachusetts Society of Municipal Conservation Professionals and the Vernicle Association. I plan to provide some big picture preliminary comments and will submit more detailed written comment letters. I commend EA for moving the draft regulations forward and providing an opportunity for comment. Thank you again for the extension of time. We've worked for decades as partners to advance the EA disposition of land policy into a law. And we've been working together a long time on this issue, so it isn't a surprise. I'm echoing some of the comments that have been made by many of the speakers today. Municipal staff and conservation organizations play a critical role in making sure Article ninety seven land isn't converted. Or if necessary, making sure a conversion is done within the required guidelines to protect the natural resource values. Municipal staff are the boots-on-the-ground partners, reminding or informing our professional counterparts about Article ninety seven and the steps that are required to comply. Municipal staff and conservation organizations ensure Article ninety seven requirements aren't ignored. Draft regulations would benefit from adding a preamble section that includes more information on the no net loss purpose. Clarification of types of lands that qualify as Article ninety seven. Examples of Article ninety seven interests and actions that qualify as conversion or disposition. Draft regulations would benefit from adding regulatory language from the no net loss policies need to declare land as surplus to Article ninety seven needs. With the Climate Action Plan and EA's noted discussions on increasing the pace of conservation to thirty percent by twenty thirty and fifty percent by twenty fifty. EA should include regulatory language that emphasizes to proponents of a disposition that these actions should be a last resort. Would be beneficial if the regulations include a written sequencing of avoiding, minimizing, mitigating with replacement. Then mitigating with in lieu funding. Draft regulations would benefit from adding regulatory language that include collaboration with the public entity holding the Article ninety seven interest throughout the entire process. The no net loss policy required a unanimous favorable, favorable vote of the public entity. The requirement should include a significant vote, a minimum of two thirds vote of the public entity holding the Article ninety seven interest to declare it as surplus and support the proposed replacement land or in the, if applicable. Countless, countless conservation organizations and municipalities worked for many years to get the no net loss policy codified in this law. But the omission of the declaration of surplus need and the lack of public entity vote is disappointing. I've been involved in this process for nearly two decades, writing many letters, contacting my senators and representatives. And even going to Boston to provide in-person testimony during the hearing. Those two items are really important and must be added to the regulations. That said, I do acknowledge EA's significant efforts and improvements to transparency through the website and all the resources and tools that have been added, including the new tool tracker, tracker tool. Draft regulations would benefit from adding significantly more details to the natural resource values section. Natural resource values can't be described by aerial photography and mapping alone. While they're great tools, it misses the local knowledge component. An inspection of the land to be disposed and the replacement land should be required. Draft regulations would benefit from specifying the in lieu funding be dispersed to the public entity of the Article ninety seven interest rather than CPC committee. Who may not have the same understanding of natural resource values that would be taken by a conversion. Also CPC funding would need to be approved at town meeting. And to avoid confusion, competing interests within the committee or accidental misappropriation of funds. The in lieu funding would be better held and used by the public entity holding that interest that was lost. Draft regulations would benefit from adding public notifications to a centralized location, such as the environmental monitor. Environmental Monitor already has a robust email notification component. And limiting notice to a municipal website would reduce equitable notice for out-of-town residents who might be using land in another town. Notification should be both local and statewide centralized location. Submitting, submitted appraisals should be shared with the public entity holding the Article ninety seven interest with an option to contest those appraisals if it's appropriate. EA is requested to provide robust training on the regulations once they're final. Including how to use the natural resource tool and creating the screening reports. EA is requested to provide written responses to those who comment on the draft regulations. Or even better, meet with a stakeholder group to discuss the received comments and then provide a written response to all commenters. The draft final version should be available for public comment as well prior to adopting those final regulations. And include a public meeting session to discuss and answer questions, provide meaningful discussion. Rather than just a public hearing where EA just receives the testimony. And I just want to add that EA, EA has made great strides in improving the transparency of the Article ninety seven disposition process. And I applaud your efforts for tackling this complicated and important issue. Your commitment to land protection is clear and I look forward to working collaboratively on our shared goals. And remember that MSMCP is a resource to EA and can provide valuable insight into the intermunicipal workings as well as a stakeholder in these goals. So thank you.
Yeah. Excuse me, again, thank you for your testimony. Uh, others in the room would like to testify.
Thank you, Kirk, and thank you, Madam Secretary, and Mike and Bob and others who've been working within the administration to get these regulations out. My name is Buzz Constable and I'm a, on the board of the Mass Land Trust Coalition. So I mimic, I ratify everything Rob said a few minutes ago, also on the board of the trustees, the Lincoln Land Conservation Trust. And I was a member of the Special Legislative Commission on DCR. And note that we haven't heard much about DCR in these comments and I urge you to think, I will urge you in a moment to think of how state agencies as well as municipal agencies need to have, need to deal with alternatives and, and in lieu and whether in lieu works. I think that's a whole problem that I, we don't, haven't seen here and we urge as you work on. The, the essence, before saying anything else, I do think we ought to have somewhere in this hearing, just a tip of the hat to Phil Saunders, for whom thirty years, twenty-seven years or something of his work has led to where we are today. And I'm sure he would have lots of comments if he were here, but overall, he would be as appreciative as the rest of us are that we've made process. Much of what Phil wanted, and I think much of what's in the act and what ought to be more as clear as they are and more clear in the regs, is transparency, been mentioned by others. I think it's really complimentary that you have included in urging proponents or public entities to meet with, with, in this case, Mike, but with the agency prior to filing. That doesn't show up in a lot of regulations in the state. I think the regulations could, could include the statement of intent that others have commented on as well. I note that the Wetlands Protection Act, three-ten CMR, ten point one, does have a statement of what's intended by this, and I think it'd be very, very important, particularly given the subjective nature of some of these analyses that have to be done, for you to make that more clear. A number of people have already commented about the need for a centralized location for any of these filings. I think the filings ought to come both to you, it ought to include both any filings to you and bills that are filed should have an obligation to come to you. I'm not sure you can put those in the regs, but I'm sure you could urge that the, the House Clerk and the Senate Clerk have, tell the secretary so that you can put them in a central place. I tend to think the environmental monitor is the right place. As I understand it, in the past year, you've had a manageable number of, of those bills that have come through. And if it's forty or fifty bills and there's only a notice in the environmental monitor, it does not appear to be administratively a difficult, a difficult thing to manage. The public comment, I think there's a, almost a Scrivener's error in the regulations that the public comment is really only invited for in lieu, for the in lieu, I think, if I read the regs right, is only invited for the in lieu situation. And the public comment ought to have, ought to be very expressly permitted and seen somewhere. I do think that the secretary should be encouraged to respond to comments that are made, but I think the public entity should be required to respond to comments that are made. I think that that's an easy for them to do and in light of the idea of trying to discourage, where possible, the conversion of Article ninety seven land, it would be important, I think, that the public entities have to say something. Enforcement, you've heard a little about today and I think it's, it's really crucial. Part of the comment that was, that was made earlier about the need to have a multiple of the price on the in lieu fragments is going to be very difficult to do, of course. I, it might be, it might be assuaged if the enforcement for not complying, either with the process or the, or the acquisition in transfer of use. So I don't think people have commented on the fact that you not only have to acquire the property, you have to put it to the same use as the property that's left. So the process, the acquisition and conversion of use and the reporting, all ought to have a very significant penalty if it's not done. In this case, there's been some conversation about that penalty being all discretionary funding of, that the Executive Office of Environmental Energy and Environmental Affairs can provide. If you haven't complied and, or you haven't cured after non-compliance, you ought to be ineligible for those kinds of grants, something like that. I might go for GRAS, Mass Works as well, because Mass Works are part of what we have for infrastructure and I, I think that would be appropriate as well. Somehow you have to crank up the enforcement that makes it unlikely that, that does, that balances, actually it balances two things. It makes it unlikely that someone will apply, they will look for other alternatives. On the other hand, it also, you have to have it in a place, and I think this is where the in lieu came from in conversations in 2022. It has to be a place where the public entity or the proponent doesn't just go to the legislator, legislation, legislature and say, notwithstanding, notwithstanding these regs. So I think you gotta, you gotta have something that works, you gotta have something that's enforceable. Last comment I'll, I'll put, because no one else has done it yet, there are two places in the draft regs that, that allow the secretary to exercise her soul, their sole discretion. Sole discretion isn't seen many places in regulations. I can't think of anywhere they are. Sole discretion recognizes, and I recognize, that you have to have some deference because these are very subjective decisions on what alternatives are or the two places that they're, that they're commented on. But sole discretion has to have, has to have a review someplace. And unless general counsel at EEA says, yeah, you still can do a ten citizen suit or you can go to court and say that she was arbitrary and capricious, which is usually the standard without the word sole, I think you need to qualify the word sole somewhere. I look forward to a few minor things that we'll, I'll try to put in writing. Really appreciate both the efforts you've made in writing, in being responsive and as, as Jennifer noted, the idea of the portal, the tracker, all that is, is something that I don't think you had to do and I think it's a really efficient way to do something. And I sure as hell hope you don't get a lot of, of filings. So thank you very much.
You guys have a lot of thoughtful comments in there. Okay.
Yes, Doug Pizzi, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, hello, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to make comments on the draft regs. As we all know, it took about twenty years to pass this bill. And we also are thankful for the extended public comment period and for the work that's been done already around this situation, particularly the website and the tracking tool that lists these conversions. It brings a welcome layer of transparency to the process. Without belaboring some points that have already been made, one of our primary concerns is a lack of enforcement in the regs. And we also understand that it may take legislation to bring that into play. And in the meantime, while we're waiting for that, we would request that the secretary make municipalities in violation ineligible for any discretionary grant programs that are awarded by EO, EEA or its agencies or in its agencies. And, and we have no doubt that the current administration will live up to the no net loss principle behind PLPA. But the reason why we need enforcement in the law itself is the same reason we needed the law to begin with. PLPA must guarantee the no net loss is never subject to the whims of individuals. And the, the reason why we got involved at Mass Parks for All is because of a situation that came to our attention in 2018, where the communities of Fitchburg and Westminster sought to take eighty acres of Leamester State Forest to add a cell to their shared landfill. And by the time we learned about this egregious attempt to end-run the no net loss policy, the legislation had been filed, heard and sent to House Ways and Means, where it was awaiting further analysis prior to being discharged to the House floor for a vote. The proponents of this legislation followed none of the conversion policy guidelines. So that's how we got involved in it. We worked with a coalition of groups to continue advocating for this law and to have it passed. Some of those folks testified today. And so we're looking forward to making some more detailed public comments during the period and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Doug. Let me ask if anyone else in the room.
Thank you very much. My name is Dorothy McGlinsey. I'm the executive director of the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions. Thank you very much for the opportunity today to make comments. Mass Association of Conservation Commissions, MACC, will be making formal comments within the comment period. But first off, a few, a few other comments. Thanks so much for all the hard work that you have done, the folks at EEA, in getting the portal, what used to be called the PLPA portal, now the Open Space Act portal, with all of the information that's on there. And it's, it's been a lot of work. I know it's been a couple of years coming, but thank you very much for starting the process for transparency. We think you might have a little bit further we need to go on the transparency end, but we're really thankful for the work that's done to date. I also want to thank, as, as was said here today, thank the efforts of those who came before us, whether it was Phil, including Phil Saunders, Representative Ruth Balzer, Senator Jamie Eldridge, and the multitude of people who've worked hard to get the legislation passed in some way, shape and form. And so thank you all for, for the efforts. It did take twenty-four and a half years to, to get this rolling. We're excited that we have regulations now. Thank you very much for getting the template for the process, but we do have some comments. And I've heard many of the comments that MACC will be making. I don't want to reiterate all of them, but I do want to reiterate a few. We feel that in, in section one, in the purpose, you're really losing the effect of what the previous guidance document from nineteen ninety-eight, the known, what we commonly called the no net loss policy. We feel that really has to be emphasized. It's, it's not in here as the primary effort of these regulations. We think it needs to go in. In addition, we certainly love the fact that there's a two-third vote of the legislature. We certainly urge additional votes like that by both municipality and the conservation commissions or the other entities that have control of the open space. We feel it's very important. I, I personally am committed to a unanimous vote by the conservation commissions, but two-thirds vote sure sounds a whole lot better than a majority. So we will be submitting comments to that effect. Public notice requirements. We think the twenty-one day is a good start, but we do think it should be, have additional communication with the municipality involved. We don't think that is fully addressed and needs to be in here. In addition, the non-compliance issues, what happens if the municipality involved does not agree with the alternatives analysis? We need to have some sort of mechanism to both deal with enforcement or non-compliance issues. Finally, you will be seeing comments from MACC during this comment period, but we do thank you for the extension of time so that it's beyond the holiday period. And now the comments are due on the twenty-second of January. Thank you very much for your time.
You for testimony. Online?
Heidi Ritchie, you are next. You should be able to unmute.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm Heidi Ritchie, Director of Policy and Advocacy at Mass Audubon, and I also serve on the board of the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions. I want to thank you for all the work that EEA has been doing on these draft regulations and for extending the comment period and now for also, you're going to be holding a second public hearing. Mass Audubon strongly supports the passage of this important law to codify the Article ninety-seven land disposition process. Land protected under Article ninety-seven of the state constitution is, it's among our most precious resources that we have here. And it is important to have a consistent, rigorous process in place for evaluating any proposed disposition or changes in use of these conserved lands. Key elements of that process includes public notification and opportunities for input on all such projects, transparency and a strong alternatives analysis and compensation with lands of equal monetary and resource values for unavoidable dispositions. We appreciate the progress that EEA has made through the website and that provides additional information on all the proposed dispositions, development of draft regulations and updating the EA Article ninety-seven policy. Excuse me. And I would just say we will be submitting more specific written comments, but much of what I've heard from my colleagues, well, from Senator Eldridge and then my colleagues in the other statewide environmental organizations, Rob, Kathy, Buzz, Jen, Dot, et cetera, Doug, their comments all resonate strongly and we look forward to submitting our written comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. And others in the room would like to offer testimony. All right, is there someone else online then who would like to testify?
Peter Jackson, you are next. You should be able to unmute.
Thank you. My name is Peter Jackson. I'm a Milton resident and I'm currently involved in a complicated and difficult proposed conversion of both conservation land and recreation land for a new school. Thank you for the opportunity to provide, provide testimony on the draft regulations intended to, to implement the twenty-twenty-two Open Space Act. I'm encouraged that the Commonwealth has chosen to elevate the review of proposals to convert protected open space from a policy to regulations. The twenty-plus-year effort that resulted in the passage of what's now being called the Open Space Act included a couple of primary objectives. To provide greater protection for Article ninety-seven public lands by increasing transparency and opportunities for public input to the process of land use conversions. And secondly, to move the process from a strongly political one centered in the legislature to one of regulation and environmental protection by centering project review in the environmental secretariat. As the agency charged with leading the evaluation of project proposals of Article nine, of change Article ninety-seven land, I believe EEA should take a more expansive view of its role than the narrow scope indicated in the draft regulations. A strong regulation will do as much to expedite review and protect the agency as it will to protect the people's land. A few more specific comments, although they're still quite general. Posting documents on a website alone does not constitute transparency. EEA should invite, review and respond to comments or require that the proponents do so. On more significant projects, it should host public meetings. It should post draft findings for comment before issuing final findings. EEA should review the project proposal, alternatives analysis, real estate appraisal and proposed replacement land after reviewing initial comments from the public. Formal findings should include the sufficient, the sufficiency of the alternatives analysis, the conformance with EEA standards and reasonableness of evaluations contained in the real estate appraisal, the natural resource values analysis and the proposed replacement lands for a finding of no net loss as the basis of its recommendations to the legislature. I will be submitting more specific and detailed comments on the draft regulations in advance of the January twenty-second deadline. I trust that EEA will carefully consider all comments and post revised draft regulations before formally issuing their new final regulations. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Others online who would like to testify?
Yes. Next is going to be Thomas LaRosa. You should be able to unmute.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom LaRosa. I'm the First Assistant Town Attorney for the town of Barnstow, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment today on behalf of the town. On this hearing, the town wants to just address a few points of importance. We'll follow up with more detailed comments within the comment period that address all of our comments. Section three of the draft regulations speak to pre-submission requirements such as consultation with the involved public entity, the need to occur prior to the taking of the Article ninety-seven action. Likewise, Section Four details requirements that must occur prior to taking the Article ninety-seven action. However, the Article ninety-seven action cannot be taken until the legislature has authorized such action through the Article ninety-seven legislation. That seems to allow the legislation to be filed or even passed before the proponent falls to in the reg process as long as the Article ninety-seven action doesn't occur. That seems to be too late and inconsistent with subsection C of the statute. Accordingly, we suggest that the pre-submission consultation and requirements under sections three and four should instead take place before any bill is filed with the legislature, and the wording of those sections should be adjusted to reflect that. That way, the legislature can be informed by the consultation that occurred with EEA and the public entity that owns or controls the Article ninety-seven interest, including whether the public entity supports the proposed Article ninety-seven action and whether the bill should move forward. And the bill filing may properly address the alternative analysis and the replacement of land or in lieu funding. Section five of the draft regulations addresses notification to proposed Article ninety-seven action. Section five requires notifications of the public and the secretary of proposed Article ninety-seven action. However, the notification of the public entity to the public entity that owns or controls the Article ninety-seven interest is not listed in this section. This oversight needs to be correction, corrected. Section five seems to be written as if the proponent and the public entity are the same, and often that is not the case. A public entity owning or controlling the involved Article ninety-seven interests such as the town needs to be informed and consulted throughout the process. If a town Article ninety-seven interest is part of a proposal for an Article ninety-seven action, the town is the owner of that property, more than any other, any other involved party must be at the table for discussions and decisions involving its Article ninety-seven land. Subsection one of Section Five proposes that the public entity, such as the town, host and make available the proponent's public notice and alternatives analysis. The regulation does not describe various options for notice other than posting on the public entity's website. Town believes that is entirely inappropriately, inappropriate, particularly when the town is not the proponent or does not support the proposed Article ninety-seven action. Further, the public would be better, far better served with a single location for searching and inspecting project information rather than having the information fragmented among hundreds of state, regional, and local websites. The town believes this would be accomplished best by EA establishing a single portal on its website for access and review by the public of the most current project information. Among the requirements for the alternative analysis in Section Six, the proponent, if not the public entity with care and control of the land, would need to summarize the proponent's discussions with the public entity. The town believes the proponent also should be required to share their proposed submission, including the summary and all terms analysis with the public entity for its review so that the public entity may review and provide comment before submission. Subsection four of Section Seven proposes that certain easements, including some subsurface easements, would be deemed to affect zero acres and not require replacement land subject to certain conditions being met, including monetary value being provided to the public entity under subsection two, and is drafted apparently for the public entity's unrestricted use. Whether a temporary or subsurface easement should not be subject to replacement land requirement provided the public entity receives monetary value is a fair policy discussion to have. However, the decision to do so rests with the legislature, and the proposal here to waive the replacement land requirement is inconsistent with, and we believe not permitted by the statute. The statute requires in all instances either replacement land or in lieu funding where the secretary makes specific findings and files those with the legislature. The statute makes no exception other than in subsection five A, where the secretary is allowed to waive or modify the requirement land in two specific instances. First, where the disposition involves only the transfer of legal control between public entities and does not involve any other change of use, or second, where the transfer is of a parcel that is insignificant natural resource and recreation value and is less than twenty-five hundred square feet in the area, and the transfer serves a significant public interest. The regulations waiver replacement land as proposed is inconsistent with the statute because it goes beyond these two exceptions and does not limit transfers involving a private entity to only those that are less than twenty-five hundred square feet in area and serve a significant public interest. Finally, the town believes that the regulations should have specific timelines for action by EEA. As currently drafted, the regulation contains no fine timeframes in which actions must be taken. Seeking the legislature's approval of an Article ninety-seven action involves a significant investment of time and resources. The town would not pursue such action unless it involved an important public project and was thoroughly considered by town departments and the town legislative body. Municipalities need certainty in the process so that proper planning, permitting, local appropriations, contracting, and expenditures may timely occur. It is important for municipalities to understand the timing of the process and other regulations, and after that has occurred, when a home rule petition may be filed with the legislature to authorize the Article ninety-seven action. Likewise, if in lieu funding is involved, the town will need dependable timing under the regulations in connection with securing replacement land. The local legislative body must approve any replacement land transaction and also appropriate the involved funding. These local actions take time. Further, sellers of replacement land will most likely seek assurances on a closing deadline. The town believes timeframes and the regulations are needed to avoid the challenges of open-ended uncertainty in land protection transactions. Again, the town will follow up with more of these comments and more detailed comments in writing by the January twenty-seventh deadline. Thank you again for EA hosting this public hearing and the opportunity to comment.
And thank you for your detailed thoughtful testimony. Anyone, I'm going to keep going online unless someone in the room speaks up. So next online.
Uh, next online is Constance G. You should be able to unmute.
Hello. Yes, my name is Constance G. I'm speaking as a private citizen and as the founder and president of Protect Our Westport Waters, POWW. Our little group was formed in opposition to Vineyard, to Vineyard Northeast proposal or plans to land their cabling from the Vineyard Northeast project on Horse Neck Reservation Beach, which is protected under Article ninety-seven. Just a little bit of background about this amazingly beautiful area. Westport, our little town, basically gave the state eight hundred acres back in the mid-fifties. Two miles, it's a two-mile stretch of beach. It's with, it's a barrier beach with dunes and salt marshes. It's such a magical, beautiful place and, and has regretted it. The town has pretty much regretted it after they've sawed the development that the state did, the clearcutting, the massive parking lots, which were not even needed, but ever since. However, Horse Neck Beach is supposedly protected under Article ninety-seven. So we are beseeching the, you all to please not lessen the percentage of people that have to vote to overturn Article, Article ninety-seven property in any decision-making body at any step along the way. Please don't make it easier for developers such as Vineyard Wind to take protected land or more expedient them to do so. And always, please extend all public comment periods and public notifications for comments because, you know, as just individuals that care so much about their towns, their small rural areas, you know, I don't get paid. We're just volunteers, and many of us don't really even find out about this until a few days before you're having, holding comment periods and then, and then to try to do our homework to really understand what is being proposed. It takes a lot of effort and we need more time than we're given. As far as how one finds replacement land for, for, for an area that they would be landing their cables and then clearcutting and cutting them through this reserve, I don't think it's possible. There is no such thing left around, certainly around here, replacement area right on the beach and a barrier beach and with the beautiful dunes. So that's really all I have to say. We will be form, we will be presenting formal comments in writing, but I would just like to say again, as, as a private citizen representing a small group, we're doing our best to understand what is, what we're facing, and it takes enormous amount of effort. We just, please don't make it any easier for such developers to come in and take our public open space lands protected under Article ninety-seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, next.
All right. Next is James C. You should be able to unmute.
Yep, thank you. Hello, everybody. Jim Camo here. I recently retired from DCR after thirty-seven years. Most of those years were with the land protection program, and so I, I was deeply involved with many dispositions from first the MDC and more recently with DCR. So my first comment is really a threshold question in common, and that regards what EEA's role will be in the process. So I thought two alternatives. First, will EEA's role be limited to a substantive review of the proponent's submittals prior to their being passed along to the general court? Or will EEA have a more explicit role confirming that the proposed Article ninety-seven action that goes to general court satisfies the requirements of the regulations? And let me list for you a few examples of explicit confirmation that the proponent's due diligence is sufficient, that all the parcels identified in the draft authorization are accurately described, and no replacement land is currently protected for Article ninety-seven purposes. Next, there will be, and I think this is very important, that there will be no net loss to Article ninety-seven interests. So an explicit statement from the secretary that that be the case. And, and then finally, and this is a little bit outside the box, that the proposed action will, is designed and will be constructed, maintained, and maintained to minimize unintended adverse impacts to the resource values. And that, I think, goes to the alternatives analysis and a thoughtfully prepared and reviewed by the public alternatives analysis will get a very good understanding of the subject property so that we can make sure that there are no unintended adverse impacts to the resources within that property. And my recommendation to see this happen would be to have a standard transmittal form similar to what the EA agencies use a TR one that is signed by the principal municipal official, by the proponent, and then by the secretary, in that this form be made a part of the proponent's submittal when it is sent to the general court. So that there is a document that spells out each of the important details, not in, not in great detail, but, but does describe each of the important things, that there is no net loss, that the resource values will be protected by the planned action, and that all the due diligence has been conducted and is satisfactory. So let me highlight three. Well, first though, let me say that I will be providing written comments and let me highlight three of what I think are the most important recommendations. That due diligence, that there be a minimum standard for due diligence. I think the due diligence, and this has been said by others, must reflect the current EEA specifications or satisfy the specifications of DCAM. You know, there's a long history of how to do this right. And there's no question that due diligence is a big part of that. And insufficiently prepared appraisals, particularly when they are paid for by the proponent, and the appraiser is likely more often than not to be differential to the interests of the proponent. That, that can really make a huge difference. So I think that due diligence must reflect the the Commonwealth's approach, current approach, that if the property is worth more than half a million, there has to be two appraisers. I think the appraisers should be selected from the pre-qual list that the state uses. Not every appraiser is as good as every other appraiser, and I think those that are on the pre-qual list, in particular, those that are used by the agencies, have a kind of a stake in the game, that if they present a document that is not credible, they, they put themselves in a bad spot if they expect future work from EEA and, or EEA and its agencies. So that I think that's important, that the, the due diligence is something that should be a foundation. Second is establish a factual basis for EEA's decision-making. And my recommendation is that at the time that the proposed action is an official submission, that the proponent must require, must provide a signed affidavit confirming that everything that has been presented and is being presented is factually accurate. Playing fast and loose with the facts will only cause trouble. And EEA's review is going to be dependent on what facts are presented. So they, they do need to be factually accurate. And then third, and this has to do with Section XX point zero, Section seven, four, having to do with zero acres. I have a grave concern about permitted easements not requiring replacement land. This has been a longstanding process, and not all subsurface easements are alike. There are many that are, and I'll give you an example of when the MDC surplus a small area in Chelsea within the, the property that our swimming pool is in, so that the city of Chelsea could have a new school. The small area for subsurface easement for drainage was very benign. And, and that's one case, but in, in other cases, utility corridors, new utility corridors that cross large sections of state forests in western Massachusetts are not benign. They have enormous adverse impact to the resource base, and therefore, replacement land ought to be required. So I have three other recommendations regarding the definitions. Others have touched on no net loss. And I think the, the concept of no net loss is fundamental. So we should define no net loss in the regulations, and particularly, we should touch on topics like market value, utility, no net loss to the existing conditions, and then finally, some discussion about what resource values exist on the property and no net loss to those resource values that they should be replaced. Yeah, this, this really has to do, in cases of sensitive settings, not all dispositions occur within sensitive settings, but those that do need to be carefully thought through in advance. You know, we, we don't want to cause huge impacts to large stretches of state forests in western Massachusetts without being thoughtful about these sensitive resources and how they ought to be protected to the highest degree that we can. And then my next one has to do with the definition of comparable location. My concern right now is that, particularly with state agents, that if we demand that replacement land be in comparable location within the same census block, I think that's how it was described in the draft, that, that may not really serve the public's best interest. So I, I would just suggest that revising the language so that comparable location includes land being kept local, if it's just positioned held by the town, that if it's held by a regional water board, that it be within the geographic jurisdiction of that water board, not necessarily in the same community. And then similarly, for county land should be kept in a county, and especially for Commonwealth land. That there are cases where utility companies need easements in western Mass where we have a surplus of, of open space, and that same utility company owns land in a different county that is a kind of a, a key spot for a statewide trail. So I think we need to make sure that the regulations don't preclude that. I agree with what's been said by several people about public notice, and I personally favor the environmental monitor, which is it's the go-to location for people who want to be informed. If it's just kept local, there's a good chance that someone like Buzz Constable, who could provide meaningful comment, wouldn't even know about it. But if it's in the environmental monitors, a very good chance that he would have a chance to. that he would have a chance to see it early on and be able to provide comments. And then, I'll try to be brief. A handful of other comments. I believe that authorization should expire after 10 years of inaction. And the reason I say that is there are many special acts on the books that date back many, many decades, for things like American Legion posts in the Middlesex Fells Reservation. It would be sad that if, all these years later, because that authorization's already in place, that we all of a sudden see a new American Legion post pop up in the Middlesex Fells Reservation. This, my next idea came from DCAM, where they have talked about the idea of reversion clauses being in deeds so that when the land is finally disposed of for a specific purpose, if that purpose goes away in 50 years, then there'd be a reversion clause, that the land goes back to its original Article 97 interest. Next, I think the regulation should be open to a review and revision period after, let's say, some kind of 10-year shakedown period. After 10 years, we will all know what is good and bad about the existing regulations. It'd be helpful to have an opportunity for those regulations to be reviewed and improved. You can't do that now because there are some unforeseen events that will occur. Next, the draft regulations make no mention at all of leasehold interests. For years, I favored not conveying the fee interest in DCR land, rather releasing leasehold interests in using the revenue stream for that to provide stewardship for properties. There are a number of examples where land that is truly surplus to DCR's needs could be leased out to a private developer, and the revenue from that go to help be good stewards of DCR property. A big site along Birmingham Parkway in Boston comes to mind, where I think the lease revenue from that could fund in large part stewardship of the lower section of the Charles River Reservation. This idea came from what was the BRA, Boston Redevelopment Authority, and now the Boston Planning and Development Agency. That agency rarely sells its land, favoring ground leases, and the revenue from those leases support the agency's overall operation. You know, when times are tough, it's nice to have revenue streams that the agencies can count on. And next, in this, I think this is a little bit of an unusual idea, and that is that EEA should have some... excuse me, I want to make sure I find this. EEA should have some form of, in limited form, of a variance procedure similar to the Chapter 91 variance procedure. Not every project is going to easily fit within the regulations, and so I think the secretary ought to have some limited ability to say yes to a project that is benign to the open space interests of Commonwealth but doesn't neatly fit within the regulations as they're written. And a next idea, and just a couple more, is that EEA should set aside a little bit of the cap so that the program can conduct its own due diligence. Nothing like having the best possible due diligence prepared. EEA could do that easily. And on those same lines, due diligence should include title work and environmental site assessment work. And I guess I'll leave that to that. I do have one wrap-up question, and it'd be interesting for us to learn how the federal government addresses easements and dispositions within its national park system. I think that there's maybe something to learn from the feds or from other states that could inform how the regulations should be shaped in their final form. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your many years of experience applied to these questions. Other testimony? Anyone? You have another moment for anyone else online or in the room who wishes to testify? Okay. In that case, there being no other comments, I declare this public hearing to be closed at 2:35 PM on December 17, 2024. Again, if you wish, you may submit written comments by email or regular mail. And as mentioned at the outset here, due to technical issues, we were unable to offer translation in all of the intended languages. To address that, we will be offering a second public comment, our public hearing, on the 16th of January, remote only. Please look for a proper notice of that hearing in the near future. And written comments must be, if you wish, you may submit written comments by email or regular mail. Written comments must be received by 5:00 PM on January 22, 2025. Thank you for your comments and attendance. So, again, on the January 16, 1:00 PM, we will be offering translation services in Spanish, which was offered today, but also Vietnamese, Chinese, Haitian Creole, and Portuguese. And again, thank you to all who offered testimony today. We are concluded.
Thank you. Is it off?
Are you off? I'll be sure.